March 25, 2014 Committee as a whole. Approval of agenda, anybody care to approve the agenda or have any additions to the agenda?
I have, sorry, I have District Committee Grant.
Okay, and so that will be under 9A, which is the District Committee Grants. We'll go through them at that time, I think there's two or three or...
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Muse.
I have something I don't see here, it's the, has to do with a road that I've had a complaint about, and I'd just like to discuss that, plus I spoke with Greg Newell, TIR, about how he wants these, and I think I'd like just to explain what he, what he told me.
Okay, so is there a road in particular you're talking about here?
Yeah, it's the Lake Vaughan Road.
Okay, Lake Vaughan, so we'll put that under 7H?
It, Deputy Chair, it might be, if it has to do, if there's instructions around how we're going to deal with Department of Transportation requests, it might be prudent to put it prior to any other discussion, like I think there's Argyle Head Road sign on 7E, it might be something you want to put higher in the agenda, just so that if, it might actually influence how council wishes to deal with the other ones, just a suggestion.
Okay, 71A? Can we put it up there?
Yeah.
Lake Vaughan Road. All right, any other additions to the agenda?
A move, approved, the agenda has amended.
Been moved?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor LeBlanc, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, okay, Carrie? Conflict of interests, is there any conflict of interest declarations around the table? Having heard none, we'll move on to, we don't have a presentation, but we do have number four, which is Outstanding Citizens Award Presentation, and that would be Counselor Albright. The, the mic is on there.
So, this is Evan Amiro, for those of you who don't know Evan, he is a resident of District Five, he lives in Eelbrook, and on August 11th, Evan performed an act of bravery that we are rewarding him, we are giving him an Outstanding Citizenship Award tonight for. He was in Eel Lake, he was hauling his nephews, they were tubing, and he drove through the lake and saw a canoe that was overturned, and kept on driving back and pulling his nephews, and he came back another time, and out of the corner of his eye, he saw something near the overturned canoe, so he approached the canoe, and when he did, it was actually a hand that was going down in the water. So Evan got closer to the canoe and saw that there was somebody struggling, and actually pulled the man out of the water into his boat and subsequently saved his life. The man afterwards told Evan that it was his last attempt to get somebody's attention, that he was actually going to go down, and he wouldn't have made it back up. So, having heard this story, I thought this was a perfect opportunity to award Evan with our Outstanding Citizenship Award, and on behalf of the Municipality of Argyle, I'd like to present this award to you, and I'd like to say thank you, congratulations, and I'm glad you're in my district.
Congratulations, Evan.
Thank you, very good.
Amazing story.
Yes.
Thank you, have a good night.
Very good.
Great. All right. Any more discussion on the, on the outstanding award? No? Okay?
This was brought to me from a resident, actually, that contacted me and said, you know, did you know, and would it, it would be nice to be able to do something for Evan, so I think it's good that we are able to do this for our residents, it's a good thing.
Great, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number five, which is business arising from the minutes. I think there's a couple of things, there's the Municipal Administration Building, I don't think, do you have anything to add to that?
Nothing, nothing significant to add on that first item.
Okay. All right, and then, next one is award and stipend.
Yes, that was a follow-up on a previous meeting, I think the decision was that it would be deferred when there were more councillors present.
Okay.
It just happened to be a, a day where fishing had overtaken our council day, I believe.
Yeah.
So it's, just to bring it back, and there was no set date for, to bring it back, so we're just, if you're ready to make a decision, you are, if you're not, then we can defer.
All right. Anybody, any discussion on this, has anybody had a chance to think about it a little bit more, or is it something that we defer again?
I, I feel that after the discussion we had at our, at our last, last meeting, that looking around and seeing what the numbers are for, for the other wardens, and the mayors from the local, from the nearby municipalities and the units, and something that, I guess I should have realized, but it was pointed out by our CAO, that our warden, over and above doing his duties as the warden, he is also, if I, I was kind of looking at comparing Mcclair, more or less that was my stand on the whole thing, but after our CAO said that, which I should have known, that we have a lot of regional things that we do with our units, which the, some of the other, some of the other units don't have, we have the airport, that there's the three units in there, there's the waste park, just slips my mind now because I want to think of it, anyhow, there's five or six more that we're involved in, Yastah, blah, 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 anyhow, so looking at those num, looking at the, the extra work that he's doing, I certainly have no problem to support the motion to, to put his stipend up, and I would like to make that as, as a motion, that we move his stipend as suggested at our last meeting.
Counselor Muse.
I guess Counselor Soret kind of summed up what I was going to say as well. The thing that I, I know, oh, is there a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I can, I can second the motion to, to discuss it here, anyway. I don't know that we've come up with a concrete figure, that's the only thing that I've, you know, we're discussing, and we, we did say that probably he, he should be, he should have a raise in his stipend, however, I, I'm not sure if anybody has a figure in mind or not, that, that would be my, my question, I mean, it's, if we make a motion to increase, I think we should have an amount that we're going to increase to as well. I know I've looked at some of the stipends, and, you know, there's definitely, I feel that, that, that it is too low, for sure, and that it should be brought up. I just don't have a figure right now.
Yeah, all right. Counselor Soret again.
Looking, it's kind of, you got me quite quick there, but I was looking at what we had discussed last, last time, I think it was 31, 31-1, I know if the CAO remembers what that number was, if you wouldn't mind?
I haven't. Based on our work, we had taken an average, so if that's the number you're referring to?
Yes, yes, I am.
The average was 31,764, and if you recall, we also did an average on the population, which Counselor Donaldson had suggested we do that, and it's, it's in, the average was in our range of population as well, so that number was 31,764.
Am I, would I be correct in stating, Mr. Deputy Warden, that I could add to that motion, 31,764? Could I add that on, or do I have to make a, void that, void that motion, or rescind?
Just amend it.
Just amend it, okay? 31,764 is the number.
Yeah, all right.
And you?
Any more discussion?
Need the second here to...
Okay, okay. Okay, been moved by Counselor Soret, seconded by Counselor Muse, you've all heard the motion, all those in favor, if you can, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Carrie?
So, just to remind council that increase will be effective April 1st, of the new fiscal, because we had made a previous commitment
Yeah.
To, to examine at the end of this fiscal year, so that will take effect April 1, 2014.
Yeah. Okay, any other business arising from the minutes? If not, we will move on once I can find my agenda. Next one is number six, will be financial report, attachment three pages, VCA Muse.
That would be me. Okay, so, we went through this in quite a bit of detail at the last, at the last meeting, so I'll try to stay a little higher level, just bear with me a moment, I had to go into last, last meeting's agenda to find that, that number on the stipend, here it is, okay, so the financial report, what I've done, I've done a, I've changed the presentation only slightly, just to, I guess, to make the discussion a little bit easier to follow. So right now, what we're seeing is on page three, accountants always start on the last page, we're projecting an operating fund surplus of just, just above $89,000, so this includes a couple of things that I've made adjustments for. First of all, under the, last month, under the revenues, what I had done was decrease the operating reserve revenue to, to, basically under the assumption that if, if you're going to incur a surplus, you wouldn't bring in the money from the reserve to pay for things that, that had been earmarked for in the past, so because we didn't, and, and so, so just to give a little bit more detail around that, an example of that was, we had put $80,000 from the operating reserve into income last year to pay for the tennis court retrofit, the tennis court retrofit didn't happen, so we didn't transfer the money, so that's very common, so if, if something doesn't happen, we don't transfer the money, so that's how I reflected it last month, okay, so this month, what I did was I restored that number, okay, so, so it doesn't, it, it, so, so it doesn't show a big negative variance on the operating side, however, under your expenses, and you'll find that on the last page, transfers to reserves, you'll see that there is a variance of 205,500, and what that actually represents is, I've done that purposely, so that I can track exactly what that number is going to be transferred for. Now, in probably in the month of April, once we have a little bit more information around the year end, I'll be asking council to make a motion to transfer an amount to the reserve, we've done that in the past, did it last year, did it the year before, so, and it'll be, it'll be in the operating reserve more than likely, and it will be earmarked for specific activity that we will be carrying forward from the previous year, so the example around the tennis court retrofit, for example, that 205,000 includes that 80,000 that will be transferred into the new year, because for logistical, operational reasons, that couldn't happen this fiscal, so that will definitely happen next, so that's the kinds of things that we're going to, to, to recommend to you as, 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 as an action, to, to make sure that, that the money that we earmarked last year and last year's budget gets utilized for the purposes that we said we were going to use them for, okay? So, so 80,000 is an example, there's other larger examples that include a transfer for Argyle Economic Development, there was a fairly large number there, set up last year, so I'm going to suggest that, you know, a good chunk of that go into next year's budget, what's the significance of that? What you're basically doing is you're taking the surplus, that's a number at the end of a period of time, and you're saying, okay, well, let's put that in this account, and then in the new year, we don't actually have to rate for it, which means those, those expenses will not, will be funded by the reserve and not by your operating rate, because they've already been funded by your operating rate.
Does that make sense?
Okay, so, so that's, you know, we've been going through some of these variances quite a few times over the, over the year, so rather than focus on those variances today, because they haven't changed, the reasons haven't changed, I wanted to focus on, what does it look like between now and the end of the year? You know, had we not provided for a transfer to the surplus, we would have had a fairly, a transfer to the reserve, we would have had a fairly significant surplus, but again, in, in a way, that's, that's all timing, right? Some of the projects, the surplus is really driven by two major reasons, one is, we said we were going to do it, and it didn't happen exactly at the same time that we said we were going to do it, and the other, the other factor is that we spent less money than we said we were going to spend, right? Or we received more revenues than we thought we would, under deed transfer tax, for example, okay? So rather than go line by line today, I just want to kind of give you kind of a, kind of higher level picture of where we are, I would also like to mention, because I know that Counselor Soret had mentioned this at a previous meeting, around the financial measures?
Yeah.
That, financial indicators is the proper term, that the province is putting out, so the province will be releasing very soon, if they haven't already, financial indicators for all municipal units, so, so I think you would have seen at least the first crack at this, the first year, where it says like, that, that there are certain metrics or, or things that they measure financially, ratios, et cetera, and the province determines a certain range where they should be, where they should be, in order to, to indicate health, or financial health of, of the organization, so if you're within that parameter, you're green, green is go, green is good. Yellow means that you, you may, there's actually two indicators that they measure, they measure what they think the standard is, and what they, and what they think the average is in, across rural municipalities, so if we fall in between those two measures, because they're different, then we get a yellow, and there might be great reasons why there's yellow, they give you plenty of opportunity to explain why things might be yellow, and then of course, if you're on the wrong side of both of those, you get a red, right? So, so the things that we're green on are cash flow, liquidity, you know, our debt is extremely low, our finance, net financial position is extremely strong, we, you know, we have reserves, we've, we, we actually, they, they're actually measuring how much money we're putting away for a rainy day, they measure that, so we're, we're, we're well within our parameters there, so all of those indicators are positive, some of the indicators that might show yellow involve like, commercial revenues, like our percentage of revenues derived by commercial business is probably a little lower than the average municipal unit, and, you know, and, and may continue to be, and, and we may, we may successfully increase that revenue, and what I've pushed actually is for the province to measure wind turbine revenue as part of that calculation, because it's commercial, but it's not based on assessment.
That's right.
So, so, so that was a teaching moment, because there's very few municipalities actually have that legislation playing for them, so it's still, even adding that had us a little lower than the average. The taxes receivable at the end of year, they're using figures that include our long-term accounts receivable for the Tuscan sewer, which drives us higher than the average, if you exclude that figure, we're very, we're very much in parameters, and the, the last ones that you'll see, yellow or red indicators, are our population, right? So that says one of the, one of the trends of a, of a healthy community is, is, is that the population is increasing, obviously in a lot of rural Nova Scotia, that's not the case, so we're no different, so that, there's, it's very interesting information, especially for the bean counters, and, but it does provide, like, I'm, I'm going to, once it gets released, I'm going to provide comments on behalf of, of the administration around those indicators, but we should be taking them seriously, because they, they are indicators of, of, you know, if you're trending in a certain way, that you will see that, so it's not just to see it on a particular year, but to see it over a multitude of years, to see whether that trend is actually improving or not, and so I can assure you that we'll be looking at it and saying, okay, well, we can do better here, you know, hopefully we can do better there, but there are certain areas as well, that, that are difficult for us to control directly, like population, so, so it's, it's, it's an interesting exercise, and it was positive, it was very positive in behalf of the Municipality of Argyle, but, you know, we'll continue to monitor that, and just keep your eyes open on the Service Nova Scotia and Municipal Relations website for that, okay? It's another piece of information for you to understand on another level where we are fiscally.
Okay. Any other questions for C.A. Muse?
They must, they must question the level of transfers that you make every year, or surpluses, I suppose. If, if your surplus is too high, it would, it would show up also.
How they, how they would measure that, there's two things they're measuring, one is, how did you budget, and how did you fare compared to your budget?
Yes.
So, and I debated this point, because I'm not sure I agree with them, but anyway, some battles you win and some you don't, this one I don't think I did yet, but anyway, so what they're saying is, it's, it's a measure of, of fiscal sustainability, your ability to budget properly and actually do what you budgeted, is a, is a, is a sign that you know what's going on, and, and fiscally that you're, you're going the right way, well, from our perspective, we're, we'll actually show in the red there, but the reason is because our actual expenses were 5% overall, were 5% less than what we budgeted, so my argument would be, well, why would you penalize us for being frugal, right? So, so, so because the red will obviously, that's where your eye will go, oh, you didn't do what you were supposed to do there, so I was concerned that it would actually motivate municipalities to behave improperly around the budget, because if you, if you wanted that to be green, it's very easy, you just spend, right? You just, you just, you know, if you're down by 5%, you just, you know, at the 28th of March, you start, you know, well, that's not responsible, right? So that's, and that's not what we, we will do, and it's not going to motivate us to do that, but, but, but if, if, that the only thing that you were being driven by is that statistic, well, you might, you, you might make a different decision, so that was a bit of a concern that I had raised, and, and they appreciated that, they're not ready to change it yet, but they appreciated the input. They do also measure deficits.
That, that happens in some levels or departments, you know, if you don't spend your budget this year, it'll be cut next year and spend it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and so...
We don't do that.
No, no, we don't, so, so from our perspective, they do also measure whether or not we've had deficits, so they, they count how many deficit years you've had in a particular, in a five-year period, so if it was five, problem, right? I don't know if one is a problem or not, but, but typically they...
Trend is what they look at.
Well, they, yeah, so they, they're looking at that as well, so those are two measures there.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the financial report? Do we usually make a motion to move it?
Accepted.
Accepted, sorry. Anybody care to make a motion? Moved by, moved by Counselor LeBlanc and seconded by Counselor Book, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carrie? Okay, we'll go on to number seven, other business and for decision, 71A, Lake Vaughan Road and some information from TIR, Counselor Muse?
Yes, I, I received a call from a resident in, on Lake Vaughan, the condition of the road, this seems to be, this seems to be a fairly common complaint this time of year, we get a lot of those complaints, for sure, his complaint was ditching, he says that, you know, if they ditched the road, probably the road would hold up better, plus, I guess since his yard was eroding by the ditch, so he wondered if, if something could be done from the department. Now, I spoke with C.A. Muse on that, whether or not to bring this to here or just deal with it myself, would just call the department, so I was asked to call the manager, Greg Newell, on this, on issues like this, how he would like us to deal with these, these things. His answer was that if it's anything that a supervisor, an operations supervisor can make a decision on their own, then we should go directly to the supervisor, because in that case, it gets, if, if we write a letter, it's going to take more time, because they have to respond to a letter by letter, usually if we send a letter, we get a letter back, a response, and, and things are, might not be dealt with as quickly as if we were to deal directly with the supervisor, so my question was, so, we, 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 we call the supervisor, and then nothing gets done, because he decides not to do it, where, what do we do from there? And he says, if, if you don't get any satisfaction, then of course, the next step is the manager, you know, and, and we, we may not always know if, if, if the department or the supervisor actually even went to, to check on this, you know, so maybe we, as, as councillors, if we get a complaint like that, then we should follow up with the, with the resident to see whether or not that was, that was dealt with, or at least, because we have no control over what they do, we just have control over, over reporting what, what, what we're, what comes to us. If it's an issue that requires a higher, a higher, uh, authority, I guess, to make the decision, then we should go to the manager. Letter, usually, he prefers a letter, it goes to him. As far as the supervisor, he says that a phone call is usually better than an email, however, I think an email has a bit of a, it has a trail.
Exactly.
And I suggested that maybe if we do that, that we at least send a copy, copy the manager's well. He agreed, he said that, that would be fine as well. If we're more comfortable in going directly to the minister, which there are issues maybe that, that if it's through capital funding, then the manager doesn't have a whole lot of say, then it becomes a provincial, and then, in that case, then probably we should go to the minister. Regardless of whether we go to minister or not, usually, the response is going to come back from the manager, because they, they, they want, they want the manager to, to investigate, the minister's not going to come in and look at these situations, but however, if it's, he, he, he may not be able to make a decision on that, but he can at least respond to the letter and say what, what type of condition the roads are in, so I guess, his, in a nutshell, we should go to, to the, things that, that, that a supervisor can decide, we should go to the supervisor. I don't know if we'll always get the satisfaction, but at least, maybe, you know, like, like I already called on this, by the way, I already contacted the department on this issue, and he told me he was going to go look. I have no idea whether he did or not, but I am going to contact this, this person again to see, did someone at least go look, and I told him that I, I can't make decision, I can only, you know, we, we don't make decisions on what they do, it's in their hands, so basically, that's the, the, the way that they would like us to, to deal with this. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments, or Counselor Donaldson?
Comment, I guess, I don't know if it was before the new councillors were here, but Brenda Legrand found on their website a place where you could submit complaints, it's very hard to find, if you go there, you have to dig around, but it is there, and you can submit complaints on behalf of a citizen, or as a councillor, or, or the citizen can do it himself, themselves. And you can submit complaints on behalf of a citizen or as a councillor or, or the citizen can do it himself, themselves. That was very effective because Brenda was using that. It, it doesn't go to the Yarmouth office, it doesn't go to the minister, it goes somewhere in between the two, and they act on it. Uh, it probably makes local managers and supervisors look bad. So maybe this is why they're telling you to do this, because I've used it a couple of times and I've got great results by using the website. But I'm sure it's made somebody didn't, not look like they were doing their job adequately. So I don't know what is the right way. There's, there's, that's just a comment. I don't, I don't know. I've now never had very much, very many dealings with the local supervisor or manager. I've usually let Brenda deal with it, bring the complaints because she was getting far more success than I was. But I, I'm still probably going to use the website. I don't care who it offends or upsets or whatever, but if it's an issue that I feel I want to get some action on, I'm going to use the website. Comment, that was it.
Okay, uh, Councillor Soret?
Just to comment a little bit on what Danny was saying. I've been through this maybe because of the road down home, but, uh, by God, uh, I tell you, you have to follow up on these guys, the supervisors, because, you know, I know we're on camera, but I'm going to state it like it is. I've even had, uh, the, the, all the people in that road call, went to see our M L A to call, got Brenda to go like, uh, Richard said, uh, on that site. I've called, tried to get ahold of, of the manager, and you, he's busy, doesn't take calls or something. And that's what the road bug I've come across. So the more noise I've been able to make, the more it seems to be getting, that you'll get stuff done. I know the last time we had the, the discussion here on, for the Tittle Road, I had already done my homework. We had called up and the, the supervisor was getting nowhere. So as, as our deputy warden said, you know, being this serious, maybe you should go there again. And I did go there again with, I went to see E H S and I went to see, uh, another department, the fire department. And we all went to see them and they finally did something. So we didn't need to send a letter, but, uh, this week we will get, we will get degrees and don't get discouraged. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Councillor Muse?
Uh, I guess one thing that I forgot to say as well was that, uh, Mr. Newell said that he would be willing to, to sit with council, come to a council meeting if we wish, to explain what the priorities, the five-year plans are, what the priorities are. Uh, one, one thing as well with the letters, he said that, you know, like, he said, we, we almost have to, 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 to look at what, there are things, I guess, that, that come up from either residents that we deal with, that we, that we respond to that probably would never get done because of the money situation. You know, like, like they've only got so much money, they have the capital money or whatever that, uh, and, and, and his comment was, was, uh, you know, what's more important? To, to, to spend a lot of money on a road where there's no, hardly any traffic? Or do you spend money on, on where, where, where it's going to, uh, uh, affect more people? Uh, like Highway Three and, you know, that type of thing. And he says, all these letters sometimes, it, it, it's almost as if we're, 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 we're not looking at where, where's the best place to spend this money for, for the department? That we're asking that we have requests that, of things that we probably know that would never get done. You know, so, but he would be willing to come to meetings, just, just give us a, 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 give me a, an invitation, send me an invitation to one of your meetings and we can go over. I know, or I think they, I know they used to when I was working there. In the, with the Yarmouth municipality, they used to have meetings pretty much regularly with the, uh, I know we have a, that, but, but I know the supervisor from that area, he used to have meetings with, with, with the council. I'm pretty sure. Yes. So, and he says that could be done here as well, if we, if we wish.
Okay. Councillor LeBlanc?
I'm glad you brought up the issue, Councillor Muse. In my district, it's, it's certainly probably one of my biggest concerns is the highways, be it ditches, signage, potholes, whatnot. And quite frankly, it is not really a municipal issue and it's tough for us to tackle these things when we technically don't have more clout than the average citizen right here than, you know? So, uh, I highly suggest that we sit down, if not regularly, at least a few times with, uh, with the area manager and, and at least establish how this relationship could work. Because it, it's one of my most frustrating points i- is trying to get something done on the highways when it's not really any of our jurisdiction at all. It's, uh, I, I, I don't know what would be the motion to make there, at least request a meeting, I guess.
By motion or consensus?
Yeah, consensus works.
Okay. Councillor Soret?
I'd just like to add on to what, uh, Councillor Muse said. I find it very, very irresponsible for a manager to go say what you just stated. If he told you that, that he, and I'll tell you what it is. When he said how to prioritize, uh, where to go spend the money or do the work. If you go down at the end of the Westport Road, Public Road, the Tittle Road, and you tell him, listen, there's only two or three of you staying there, and you know what they shove in my face? I pay damn taxes like the rest of everybody. So that's very irresponsible, in my opinion, that he said that. You know, that's all I have to say.
Councillor Muse?
And I, and I don't think that it's a matter of, of, uh, how many people live. I mean, you could have, you could have a road that only two people live, but it's a busy road. And I think that's what he was saying, not, 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 not the amount of people that live there. It's the usage of the road.
Traffic.
Traffic. Uh, how much traffic is on that road?
That's what he said.
Yeah, you know, that's.
That's what he meant.
That's what I meant. If I, if I, if I gave the wrong, the wrong impression there. Definitely, that's not what he was saying. If only two people live on a road that you're not going, you know, you're not going to fix it. That's not what he was saying. It's the amount of traffic on a, on a road that, that determines where the money goes. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, we're looking for either consensus, uh, to meet with the area manager or a motion, whichever one council desires, uh, consensus?
Yeah.
All right? So we will pass our C A O or Deputy C A O to, uh, contact the area manager and arrange a.
After a budget.
Suitable, uh, time to, to meet. All right? All right, so that's, uh, seven one A. Seven A, Quinnen Phone Line Issue. Now, I'm assuming that that's something that Councillor Albright brought to our attention, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, early March, uh, C A O Muse and I went to a meeting with the Quinnen Fire Department on a totally unrelated issue to this. But it was brought to our attention that there are some serious issues with the phone lines in Quinnen, especially during rainstorms. And if you've ever been way down the end of Quinnen and first of all, you've tried to use your cellphone, you're pretty much out of luck. And I guess apparently, when it's raining, you're pretty much out of luck to use your landline as well. So their concern is if there is an emergency and you can't use your cellphone and you can't use your landline, what do you do? So they asked if we could bring this issue to council and see, you know, if there was something that we could do to, to get a line, Bell Alliant on this or, you know, they, they'd like to see the problem rectified, which makes complete sense.
True.
Yeah. So I wanted to know, I mean, I, I'm assuming the best route would be to send a letter to Bell Alliant requesting that they look into this and find a solution. I mean, it's.
Are you making that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councillor Albright, seconded by Councillor Muse. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carry. All right? Next one is seven B, Policies. First Notice. Okay, there's two policies we're looking at, the First Notice. Uh, CA Muse, you got something to add to that?
Simply that these are notices and they don't require a motion at this time. This will be brought to final approval at the next meeting. Uh, two things, one being the policy on pension plan. Due to an amendment, uh, we will be amending the pension plan policy. Um, and the change is very clearly noted there and, and is, is, uh, understood by, by council. The second is Dangerous and Unsightly Policies, a fairly new policy, but we had, uh, because we had a priority, we, we know that this is kind of an up, up and comer in terms of, uh, focus around the, you know, beautification, et cetera, of, of our community. Uh, one of the things that we had, one of the first steps was to bring a solicitor in, a, a consultant that does this type of work, uh, consistently. And this person provided advice as to how to change our policy to perhaps put a little bit more teeth in it. Uh, because, you know, eighty percent of our dangerous and unsightly issues can be resolved fairly, fairly easily. Uh, but the twenty percent take an extraordinary amount of time. So these changes are helpful in that regard. And so, um, I invite you to read through them. And if you have any questions between now and the time we have to make approvals at the next meeting, um, you can direct those questions to myself or to John Sullivan, uh, being the crafter, the author of the changes, along with the consultant.
Okay. Any more discussion? And hearing none, we'll move on to seven C, Gardener's Lane Paving. I think that was, was that one that you brought? Okay. Go ahead, Councillor Muse.
I'm busy tonight. That's another request that I've had, and it's Gardener's Lane. You all know that, that in the, in the business bar, the, the residential bar. I've been asked if there was any chance or what would be the, the procedure to get that road paved. It's not a long piece of road. Uh, we're selling lots on that road. It's certainly, there's going to be some, some, uh, residences on that, on that road. And I guess this person kind of knew that about the gas tax, whether or not that would qualify or not. I'm wondering if there's any way that we can get an estimate of what it would cost to, to cover it and what resources we have as far as the, uh, cost of that to, to pay for it, whether or not we want to use a gas tax or not to, to do that. It's one of the roads that we own, so that means it would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't come from the department. It's ours, it's, it's a municipal road. So the cost would have to be, to be borne by this, wherever, wherever we can find money, but it, it definitely, uh, municipal responsibility. So I'm just wondering if we can get staff to at least check on what it would cost, uh, whether it's feasible for us to do that, whether or not we can come up with the funds. And I guess that's all I have, but.
Okay.
I don't know if you need a motion for me to do that, or do you want to discuss it first?
Move another light on, we'll. Councillor Soret?
I guess I, you know, I, I can't blame those people for whoever approached you to want it paved. I mean, it's certainly nice to have pavement, but I would be scared if we start pricing paving around. You know, there's many, uh, not a whole lot. Uh, I think the Montague Road, is that owned by the, it's not owned by?
No, no.
But we do have a few roads, do we?
We own, uh, we technically, uh, own a Slowman Crescent, which was a, which was a J-class road. We, we do technically, all the J-class roads are, are special in terms of how, that, that we actually own them, but we, but we, uh, we have a, a specific contract with the Department of Transportation to maintain them. Um, the only road that we, that I would consider a municipal road that is not a J-class road would be this road in question. Um, we constructed it probably, what, four, maybe four years ago, three, four years ago? Um, and, uh, and it was constructed to, to, to spec, to engineering spec in the case that, um, that, that, that it was a priority of council to be paved. It would, would, would be capable of being paved. Not to say that that was your priority at the time, but just to suggest that that's how it was constructed.
Just to finish off then, since we, we do not, I thought maybe the Montague and a few other roads were ours. I'm wrong. But I would be, I guess, wouldn't be in favor of, of, of paving roads. Because, you know, a lot of people are struggling, times are tough, and it would seem to me would be, you know, putting money, really that we don't have, we've got a lot of things we want to do, it is paving roads, one of them, I guess. That's my, that's my, two cents worth.
Okay. Councillor Muse?
I, I guess, a- and as I said, we would have to see where this money could come from. I mean, uh, uh, number one. And we maintain that road, am I correct? Yes, it's grading and whatever. The road is washing out right now on that hill. That's one thing. And I'm just, uh, wondering that if it was paved, maintenance on that, on a paved road becomes a lot less than, than what it would cost for a gravel road as well. Because once it's paved, you, your maintenance pretty much goes, goes down for sure. So I, can I make a motion?
You sure can.
I'd like to make a motion that at least that, that, that staff check into the cost of doing this and come back to, and, and to see where the money could come, could come from and just come back with a report to, uh, the council.
Okay. Motion on the floor. Councillor LeBlanc?
Um, getting a price won't hurt. I'd at least like to look at the figures, I'll second it.
Okay. The move and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Sorry.
Yeah. Your light's always on.
Okay. That's, thank you, I appreciate that. It's, I feel grateful for, it could have like a double meaning. Anyway, um.
Not in this case.
I better clarify what I meant by that. Anyway, um, so, uh, just on the, on the situation where it relates to, to, this would be a capital. This would be a capital, uh, priority. So what I would suggest is, certainly, I mean, you're going to vote on the motion, but like, and, and whatever the voting occurs, we'll do whatever the voting ends up being, of course. But, uh, from our perspective, what we, if, in either case, we'd like to introduce, uh, ca- capital projects of this nature, once they get into the hopper and like, if that is in, of an interest to council, we'd like to do that through our formal capital planning process, which we have a capital investment plan. We do multi-year. So that, that would be, um, if, if we were to cost it, which, which doesn't necessarily mean it lands on that capital investment plan, it just means we're going to get a price. But, um, I just want to, I just want to remind you that that's where that, that type of priority would go so that we could assess all of them together.
Yeah.
Right? So that's, that, that's to your point, Councillor Soret, around, we only have so much money to go around, right? So, so, and I just want to point that out, that that's our process that we've done in the past and that we'll continue to do that, but that's a little independent of the motion, so I will write down that.
Yeah. Councillor Soret, you had your light?
I, I would just would like to state, uh, one more thing, that if you had a resident that's asked you to, uh, see, you know, to, to get it paved, I, I was, I was on that road and a little bit of washout that's there. I would think about two wheelbarrows of gravel would cover what I've seen there. There's a little bit of washing that was on the gravel. And, uh, you know, I, I would think that if it's only one person that could, got, got ahold of you, should we make a motion on pricing something from one person, request to pave a road? That's, anyhow, that's my two cents worth again. Yeah.
All right. There's a motion on the floor.
Question?
Question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Nay. And I'd like to record it, please.
Okay. All right, motion carried. Move on to next one. Seven D is the S P C A contract. C A O Muse, I do believe that's yours?
Yes. Uh, tiny history, not too long. Uh, this contract, uh, I'll start with saying I recommend that we sign it. Um, we've, we've had a number of meetings with the S P C A management, uh, to make a lo- a short story long or the other way around. We independently contracted, uh, an individual who did a very good job, uh, under the animal control side. The S P C A did the pound service, which is where the dog ends up when they're, when they're caught, I guess. Uh, so, um, what has happened is that the S P C A, uh, the Yarmouth branch and that person have come to terms on an employment agreement. So she is now the branch manager of the S P C A and has the skill set for animal control. So the fact that those two organ, those two are now one, um, give us a lot more confidence and comfort around. So the fact that those two are now one, give us a lot more confidence and comfort around this contract. Couple of things you should know about this contract. It has a, an out clause. Just going by memory, I believe it's three months' notice. So in, in this, it will say like, so there are certain provisions that we all must agree on, of course, but one of the clauses, I guess, is a, is a three-month notice of withdrawal. So either party can withdraw with three months' notice. If we're not satisfied with the service, that's at our disposal. Of course, they have the same option, SPCA. The, the cost, I, you know, we were fairly satisfied with the result. I think with the SPCA, we understand that part of the contract, part of the services that they provide also include, you know, the, the, the prevention of cruelty to animals that is not really in our dog bylaw, per se. And that their mandate actually is beyond our mandate, because our mandate is the bylaw for the dogs. We don't have a cat bylaw, nor would they want us to have one, by the way. And so from their perspective, they're, they have a broader mandate around prevention of cruelty to animals. Our role is to make sure that, that, that our dog bylaw gets respected. So I would recommend signing. This is actually going to be, the cost of this is going to be twenty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars per year. I'll compare that, it's difficult to compare to what we paid the SPCA last year, because the SPCA only provided a section, a fraction of the service it will be providing now. But at the time that they were doing it six years ago, the cost was twenty-five thousand. So the cost is fairly reasonable compared to what it was when they were doing the full service before. There, it's been, it's been, I guess, they've had financial challenges at the Yarmouth branch, and the SPCA Halifax has supported the branch, and they're making changes. And so, you know, we're, we're optimistic that, that with new management, that we're moving in a positive direction. So I would like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we allow the CA to, to sign this document, the Dog Bylaw Enforcement Shelter and Kennel Services Agreement.
All right. Okay. We have a motion, we have a seconder. Any more discussion? All those in favor, seeing as I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
It's been on that, and how much of a pain it's been, and how much time it's took up, so I say at least I'll read it.
Richard, don't you read everything?
Not everything, not all.
Oh dear.
All right. We'll move on to. Seven E, Argal Head Road sign, is that yours too, Mr. Donaldson?
No, I never even received a phone call, and so I'll have to administration, people talk on this.
Okay, well, I guess the attachment is a picture, so I think a picture probably speaks a thousand words, so that's another one that we have to tell the Department of Highways.
Where there's hundreds of signs that need to be replaced, or, you know.
This one's on there, Dave.
I know, but we're not going to send a letter every sign. It needs to be, you know, there's loads of them, as far as I'm concerned. Whether we can send a letter, you know.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Sorry. I'll have to disagree, Warden. I've had, after some push, success in Westport, I feel there's no need for a sign to be broken in half on the side of the road. You send a letter to your area manager with a carbon copy to the supervisor. Work for me.
All right. Any suggestions of what we should do? Counselor Muse, I knew your button was going to come on.
I'd say that's just a replacement, doesn't, it doesn't need any, any survey or whatever from the sign department, it's just a replacement of a sign that's, that's gone. And I would say, like I said earlier, we call the supervisor, it's in his district, just to let him know that there's, that sign is broken, and the rest of them would like to have it replaced. And it's just a matter of them ordering a new sign and sticking it on there. They're still in their winter program at this point. They, they do this type of work on, on days when there's no storm. And the winter program is done, and they'll be, they'll be out there looking at signs. Usually that happens in the spring anyway, and they make a list of the signs they need. And I would say that something like that will probably end up on their, on their list. But because it's on the agenda, I would say we at least let the supervisor know of this particular one, just by calling.
Okay. Counselor Bock.
I agree with Counselor Muse. I've seen broken signs alongside the road. I've called the area manager, or whoever I could talk to, reported it, and I had no problems getting signs replaced.
Just don't hold your breath.
So do we, do we actually need a motion for this? Or just somebody's going to be assigned to make a phone call?
We can, we can actually forward the picture to the supervisor and take it out there.
You can't expect them to get things done the next day.
No, no.
They have to order them, and they're not going to just order one time.
Yeah, okay.
So just on that point, I mean, we have, we have a lot of, like, I'm just, I guess, you know, the, the challenge that Department of Transportation has is that all of these calls are coming at the same time, and we're probably not helping by giving them like one-off situations, right? So, so is it, is it, and I'm just, it's just a suggestion, is it useful for us to do a drive-by with our little iPads that have little cameras in it? And take pictures of all the signs that appear to be damaged, collect them, send them off? Boom, there you go. Here's all the signs, because they're, they're actually going to see that, but we're actually helping them do their, do their job and facilitating, which is really our role. Our role, we can't control that, but we can facilitate and advocate for our citizens. So that, that might be a way to do it. And then, then we just pook the whole thing, so they're, you know, that's, instead of doing one-offs, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah. But if you go around and just take pictures of the, the ones that are, that need replacement because they're broken or something, what about the others that are down in the ditch and missing? You know, loads of them, loads. I had a complaint yesterday about one that.
Good point.
You know.
Good point. Well, it's, 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 I'm just offering that as a suggestion.
Certainly help.
Yeah.
But they, I know they do that.
Yeah.
In the spring, when it was winter grand, I'm speaking from, I don't know if they do that now, but we always had a crew go out and check, check the signs. Yeah? And we had sign, we'd assign that a few minutes, go check all the signs, and then come back.
And then, or, do they still do that? Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor Donaldson.
We had a citizen's complaint on this one, so I, for this particular one, I suggest we, we do, we have the information, the picture, and just a phone call.
Yep.
Not a lot of, I'd say, I'd ask staff to do that on this particular one. But if we want to go around with our iPhones, we see them, click them, staff included, let's click them, get pictures. I know several other ones. I mean, we'll deal with it, one or so. Have picture look of.
Okay. So I think staff has been instructed on what to do for this particular one, and I guess the rest of us have been tasked to go out, take pictures, collect them in our, each our districts, and report back. Do you want to report directly to the department or to, to the office here?
I think it would be best to collect them here.
Okay.
So then we can actually coordinate, you know, maybe like once every so often, a number of them at the same time, rather. That's entirely up to, I mean, obviously, if you want to deal with it your own, that's fine, but, but I mean, that, I'm just suggesting that we can offer that service on your behalf.
Yeah. All right. Enough, we'll move on to next one. Next one is Trout Point Lodge, Letter of Support. Trout Point Lodge is requesting a letter of support for an application to the Nova Scotia Tourism Association Experiential Tourism Marketing Program. Trout Point has been invited to be a charter member of Unique New Lodging Experiential Tourism Association International Reputation and Standing. Due to the non-disclosure agreement, Trout Point cannot disclose the identity of the organization, which is a well-known non-profit organization. Anyway, it goes on that the price for, they're looking for, I guess the price is US fifteen thousand dollars due to other budget items. Trout Point cannot commit to this new program without outside funding assistance. So they're just asking for a letter of support from the municipality, so they can apply to this Nova Scotia Tourism Association Tourism Marketing Program. Okay. Counselor Saret.
I would make a motion that we ask staff to send the letter to, you'll have to find where it's going to be sent, I guess. To, oh, right to them, okay, to, okay, Trout Point Lodge, in support of Trout Point Lodge's current application.
Okay. Okay. Motion on the floor, we have a seconder. All, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. All right, move on to next one, which is, I guess, seven G, Yarmouth Airport Corporation Request for Advance. And I think that's CA Muse.
Yes, Deputy Warden. This was a somewhat late addition. The request coming from the airport manager in his task to adjust the fiscal conditions of the airport. One of the things that's happening right now is we have a contract or a report that requires payment, and the report, you know, is a fairly substantive consultant's fee regarding a report on the feasibility of the airport recycling. So some, the issue around this is, is there's, there's, there's no accumulated surplus in the airport, and so, and as is the case in any of these projects where COA supports, the funds are required to be spent before you can recover. And so you, you actually have to show that the invoices are being paid and that they're certified being paid. So it's a situation where the, you know, chicken and egg, where the money has to leave in order to get the money. So typically, what happens with the airport is they bill us for about thirty-five percent of their budget, which, which in, in our particular instance, last year would have been about seventy-three thousand dollars. What they're requesting is an advance that is in excess of that number in order to deal with their short-term cash flow issue. And so what I would suggest, and I did, I did recommend that, that approval, largely because it's actually just advancing money that we would otherwise invest in the organization anyway. This is not, to the best of my knowledge, not new money, this is actually investing money into the new year. But of course, it's, it would be important for us to understand what the budget's going to look like next year, in order to, to understand what that total investment is going to be. You know, one hundred thousand, last year's budget was, was two-hundred-and-ten, we had given them two-hundred-and-ten, and then, and then if you recall, there was an emergency funding request that we, that we approved. So, so that was to deal with the previous year's deficit. So, you know, we, we have confidence that that, that the fiscal condition is changing in a positive way, although there's some work still to be done. So I had, I had recommended that we do the advance, but in, in thinking about it, it might be best to date the advance April first, to make sure that, in fact, that the, the money being flowed is in the same year that it's actually going to be expended. If we don't do that, then, I mean, we're in the twenty, you know, we're the twenty-fifth now, like the, the world isn't going to end unless the storm is going to be really bad in a week. And so I think that, that while there's some urgency around paying some of these bills, the, the fact of the matter is that an April first check is, is not much different at this point in the game, and by the time we get our ducks in a row, that's probably about right anyway. So I know that the airport board members are aware that there are payables outstanding, our manager's been very forthcoming about that, and how he's trying to fix the situation. So I don't know that there's anything else to add at this point. The advance is in accordance with the MGA, it works, it's eligible. But again, I think it's better if you do it in April, rather than, rather than in March, because it would relate to the same fiscal year.
Counselor Saret.
I wonder, well, as the CEO, if he knows. I didn't see this being brought up at the last meeting, there was an issue there. You know, I wonder why that wouldn't have been brought up to the, to the board?
The, the reason why it was not brought to the board at the last meeting, in terms of the amount, was that it wasn't, it wasn't determined at that time.
At that time.
So, so there was, you know, there was some, some accounting, I guess some accounting things that had been posted in error, so by the time, by the time that got ironed out by the manager of the day, he was then able to recognize exactly what was payable and what was receivable. So there was some delay in that, that's why. Again, and the other thing, of course, is, is the approval. While the board ought to have received that in advance, the approval probably comes at the municipal council level anyway.
Irregardless.
Yeah. But I mean, I, your point is valid. Your point is valid, because then you could in fact speak more eloquently towards the, yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you. No, thank you.
Any more discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that the, the airport corporations request to advance hundred thousand towards the two thousand fourteen, fifteen operation be approved, and that the airport corporation urgently complete the budget for the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen year for council's consideration.
I guess, can we, do we have to add in there that we're, it'll be payable on the first of April, or?
It wouldn't hurt. It'd be, it would give us the guidance we need as staff, and I appreciate that.
All right. Motion on the floor? Or move by? Anybody? Counselor Saret?
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? I'll heard the motion, all those in favor, seeing as I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Contrary?
Nay.
Do you want that recorded? Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to, I guess I had an H, and then I scratched it out, put it back at one A, so, okay. Number eight is correspondence, and for information, Western County's Regional Library Minutes of December fifth, two thousand thirteen, you've been circulated with those, I guess. I don't know if there's any questions or concerns? Nope, okay. Number nine, financial requests, nine A, District Community Grants, there's two that are there. There's East Kentville Community Meeting House. I think that was probably Counselor Muse, is that correct?
Yes.
I received a letter, a request, the East Kentville, it's a community meeting house, it's an old church that's located on the corner of Minor Road and Highway two oh three, and it came from William Bill Crowell, and he's been the caretaker there, and the roof is, the roof is, on one side is, really needs shingles. And it is a registered, let me see, I've seen that.
Registered heritage property?
Pretty sure it's a registered heritage property, I've seen that. Anyway, so they're, they're requesting five hundred dollars from, from the grant.
Okay.
I would move that we, that we, so move that they get five hundred dollars.
Okay. They moved by Counselor Muse, seconded by Counselor Bock. Counselor Saret, you have something to say?
Just, just a question, is, can we pass these before April the first? Or it doesn't matter?
These are still in this year.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much. I thought this, we, everybody has been. There you go.
Counselor Muse, you had another comment?
Yeah, just, just a, a comment as well. I discussed this with CA Muse, and this, it's, it's a meeting house, but I don't know that they actually have an organization. It's, it's, it's all by the community. This is put, put by, by one person, so is that going to be a problem, CA Muse, or you CEO Muse, or you think we can do that? Is there a way to get around it?
Yes, in a sense. I guess, I guess we've set a precedent in this area, we had a request from an organization that was a community-driven organization. It was for a district community grant, like it was for a full-blown grant to organization request for, I think the answer would be no, but because it's a district community grant, there's a bit more flexibility around how we can deal with that. I think that rather than give the grant to, but I would not in fact recommend or approve a grant to be issued to an individual, because that's contrary to the grant. So what we did with a situation in Neal Brook was, they had supplies purchased and billed to us. So we actually purchased the supplies on behalf of the organization, and then they took it from there. So I guess I would hate to make that like, you know, a regular occurrence, because it does cause, it can cause confusion, especially if the money isn't spent immediately, and if it lingers for multiple years, because sometimes it just doesn't work, that could be problematic, that wouldn't, I wouldn't want that in that situation. But if they're going to look, if they're going to move swiftly, that, then that would work well for us, we would set up a payable and an engagement.
I would have to ask, yeah, I would have to...
They won't be shingling your roof tomorrow.
They're not going to be shingling, not tomorrow, no.
Actually, they should wait, yeah. They should definitely, they may want to, they may want to ask for more money after tomorrow.
So anyway, that, regardless, that would come from my portion of the community grant.
Yes, and we would administratively can take care of that, so that it wouldn't impact you negatively, yeah.
Question on the motion. Okay, you've all heard the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carry. Next one is one, I guess it was sent to me from the West Pumiko Athletic Association. The West Pumiko Athletic Association is asking for a community grant to help with the cost of maintenance and repairs to the Pumiko ball field. This year, they've, they're fixing the outfield, so I know we're going to need some funds for that, so a small, a few small projects also have been discussed for the summer, and any help is greatly appreciated, and I've, I guess, agreed to, I have $500 left in my community grants, and that's what I'm giving. Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor? Contrary? Carry. Is there another one?
Yeah, there is another one.
Okay, but it's just not on the agenda?
Well, it had been mentioned.
Okay. Yeah, okay, go ahead, Counselor Bock.
It's from the East Pumiko Playground. They're looking to put new gravel and new sand, and probably eventually buy new toys for the, toys for the playground, so they're asking $500 to help them out this summer, so I'd like to slow move that. They get $500.
Moved by Counselor Bock, seconded by Counselor Saret, I'll say.
Is that, is that a fire station?
Yeah. It's separate, it's just...
Yes, I know, but it's, yeah.
All those in favor? Contrary? Carry. All right, move on to number 10, Notice of Motion. Any counselors have a notice of motion? Counselor Saret?
I'd like to place a notice of motion on memorandum of understanding, and it is with the Town of Yarmouth, the municipality of the District of Yarmouth, and they're asking the municipality of Argyle to join them in the, like, an energy committee. And what I'd like to do is, it says, "Community Renewable Energy Products," C-R-E-P, creep or crap? Creep or crap, whatever.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is, I was at the meeting today for a couple of hours with them, discussing on where, this is where this is going, if it was, we were already agreed, by the way, to have myself as a member of the energy committee, this was passed maybe three years ago. At that meeting today, they wanted to, the municipality of, the Town of Yarmouth, the municipality of the District of Yarmouth have an agreement, which is this C-R-E-P, and they'd like for us to be part of this committee, to look at if there was some small-scale wind turbine that could be put in the area on a piece of land, let's say owned by the municipality of Argyle, or the Town of Yarmouth, or if it was feasible to put something there as far as green energy, and that we could make money off of it, it wouldn't be a cost, make money at the end of the day, that type of thing, whether it be solar panels, tidal, whatever we could investigate. No money would be spent, or let's say that would have to come to council, nothing would be involved, but this is just to join with them to...
Comfit project.
Yeah, like Comfit and CD, CDIF? CDIF is another one of those, you know, community projects. They're also asking the, for lack of word, I think it's AFN?
KDA First Nation.
KDA First Nation, I'm trying to remember the name, to come and join along with us, so maybe some part of the airland could be used, so as a joint thing to show that we're trying to do things, maybe to raise money, that we could use that money that we make for offset taxes or whatever. So I'd like to give this paper to our CAO's council, so staff could have a look at it and then bring back a recommendation or an idea, if it was the will of council to join this. Because at the meeting, we can't, they can't go any, we can't go any further on unless, you know, we want to be in it, so I said, I have to bring it to council. If that would be okay with our CEO to look at that.
Just a quick comment, I had to give my regrets to that meeting, I had a conflict. However, I mean, this is exactly in our strategy, so, and I know that Counselor Donaldson had spent quite a bit of time and energy around initial research around Comfit when it first started to come through, so, you know, it is, it is part of our strategic initiative, I guess the question will be, do we go at it on our own, or do we go at it as a team? That would be the question, right? And so, so we did some preliminary investigation around turbines similarly sized to the Université Sainte-Anne turbine, the 50 kilowatt, I think it is.
That's what it is.
And...
He was there today.
Oh, Mr. Ouster, excellent, excellent, so he would be a wealth of information around that. And there's, the financial model around that works, there's a return on investment there that is, that's real. So I think the last time we looked at it was, you know, between 40 and, could be between 40 and 60,000 profit per year, per turbine. So that might actually be better, if you're able to cluster your turbines into a broader or larger project, and so we, we wouldn't be able to do that on our own. We might be able to do two or three, but if you did it as a team, you might actually get 12, right? So, and of course, there's economies of scale around the cost of running, et cetera, so it's a very interesting concept, we'll certainly do our research and come back, yeah.
All right, so that'll be, I guess, brought up to another upcoming future meeting?
Whenever they have it ready, bring to us.
All right. Any more notice of motion? Nope, having heard none, we'll move on to number 11, Question Peard, any questions? No questions, all right. Number 12, Adjournment, anybody care to adjourn the meeting?
No, we adjourn.
No, we adjourn.
All in favor?